To three minutes for speaker. Seeing no one here. I will close public comment.
Madam Chair. I do have comments I would like to make if this is the appropriate time.
It is the appropriate time, and I would like to make one point when commissioners do speak. Please speak into your microphones. They are all up high. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to note the passing of former Planning Commission member Joetta Brown. She passed away on August thirteenth following complications from a stroke. And many of you know that Joetta served for 12 years on the Planning Commission. And she had a number of leadership roles, including being Chair and Vice Chair for a number of years during her tenure. Uh, so I wanted to acknowledge that. She was an excellent leader. And a member showing firmness when needed and compassionate at all times. She had a great concern for her community and a desire to work for the betterment of Douglas County. Uh, so our thoughts go out to her family and her friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Does anyone have any comments about Joetta? I know personally, she was my neighbor. She was wonderful person to speak to when I was walking around the neighborhood. And I enjoyed serving under her. Are there any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank Kirk and the Chairwoman for their comments about Joetta. I witnessed her many times in the Planning Commission meetings. I thought she was always thoughtful and fair-minded. And I think, thank Kirk for bringing this up because she was a wonderful person and very dedicated to her community.
Thank you, Jim. Mark?
Uh, yes, I echo everyone's thoughts. Joetta was a very wonderful person. And it was a pleasure to speak with her and work with her.
Thank you, Mark. Any others? Seeing none, with that, I will take a motion to approve the agenda. Mark, do you have one?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second? David seconded, so with that, we will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And seeing as we have a lot of feedback, we're going to have to be quick on the microphones. And now I will move for approval of the minutes. They were excellent, by the way. I had not one correction for any reason. So is there a motion and a second? Mark?
Yes. I move that we approve the August ninth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second.
Uh, Kirk seconds, motion by Mark. Kirk seconds. All those.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will now move to public hearings for possible action discussion on a zoning text amendment. DP twenty-two dash zero two one two zero one. Ordinance two zero two two dash one six one zero. An ordinance to amend Douglas County Code, section twenty dash six six zero. No, twenty point six six zero point one five zero B dash accessory uses. To allow manufactured homes to be used as an accessory dwelling. Where the primary residence is a manufactured home within the RA dash five. Rural agriculture dash five acre minimum lot size. And RA dash ten rural agriculture, ten acre minimum lot size. And MH manufactured housing overlay zoning. And to clarify that they must be secured to a permanent foundation. Presentation by Tom Delair, and he'll be back in a second. Gives you a break on your fingers from typing, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
No worries. Welcome back. While we are waiting, I would like to call attention to the Planning Commission. That the section we are most concerned about is section one. On page thirty-three through page thirty-five of the code. Sections A and B. And those are the parts that deal with accessory dwellings. But primarily, we are only concerned with, under section B, the italicized portion, which is one and two. Tom, are you ready?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. Technology issues every place you go is different. So, um, thank you, Maureen, for pointing that out. Uh, we're on packet page. Move this over. Packet page where I had it up here. Thirty-three. Thank you. So the accessory dwellings section, you guys did hear this a year ago in January. Uh, January twenty twenty-one, and this is a slight revision to that. Uh, code provision that was proposed at that time. Uh, the difference here is that, um, we are primarily making this allow it. Allowing a manufactured home as an accessory dwelling, as long as the primary residence is also a manufactured home. Uh, and also in the zoning districts of RA five, which was previously proposed, RA ten. And or in the overlay, um. Uh, manufactured home overlay areas. And I've got a presentation on where those areas are at for you guys to review. Um, and it has to be secured to a foundation. And what that requires is, um, a affidavit from the state of Nevada, manufactured home. Division that would anchor the home unit to a foundation, and then it has a conversion to real property. And what happens with the real property conversion is that Trent Tholen, our assessor. Then assesses that home as a real property, not as a manufactured home. And it has to be put on a foundation. It cannot be put on just jacks with skirting. So it will be installed on a, on a foundation. And then, um, so we added that section to the existing code. So everything you see here in black is the existing code. The red is what we're adding. And then in addition to, it says, or, uh, or the use is located on an A nineteen or, or FR nineteen or FR forty zoning district. Which was previously allowed, and that's the current code. So the only section that we're proposing to change in code today is that, that verbiage. This is, there it goes, a little delay there. Um, this is a house, um, in an RA five zone in Johnson Lane. Uh, this is the one I could find out of a cellar. They, um, it was a year, a year ago that they installed this. They built the garage. They pulled two permits. One permit for the manufactured home. You can see it has overlays in the back. Uh, of the home, there is another gable end. So the architectural requirements. For this particular style to build a manufactured home or to install one on a piece of property. Outside of a manufactured home area or home overlay area, you have to meet all of these standards in our code. And I wanted to make sure you guys understood that. Um, I cut and pasted the code. That's why this slide is so long, but I don't want to read everything. But there is a minimum width here, uh, of twenty feet wide at the narrowest point. And a thousand square feet of living area. Um, and so you'll see that that is a requirement. Uh, you have to have a four and twelve roof pitch and over at least seventy-five percent of the total roof area of the structure. So, uh, planning goes through and analyzes each of these as they are proposed. Once, uh, once Trent receives an affidavit of real property for this, this actually is classified as real property. In the two hundred classification in, in the assessor's office. And, and then they, they pay on the same depreciation schedule that a normal house, the house next door would be paying on. So it really isn't, um, any different, treated any different than a real property. It's just a manufactured home unit on that foundation. But I wanted to point that out. The architectural standards and features of a house, so every, every home in Douglas County has to meet at least three of these. Of these things, items. They have to have three of these items. So you have to have more than two gable ends. Dormers, recessed entries, covered porch, uh, bay windows, uh, building, some sort of building offset. Roof overhangs of at least twenty-four inches, and then it's a feature. I'm not sure why that's a feature, but that's what we've decided. If you have a roof pitch of six and twelve is a feature, uh, deck with railing and planters and benches. So, uh, all of these are items is what they look at. The planning department looks at as, as the building permit comes through and is issued. Here's some examples. Sam Booth shared this with you guys last year, uh, in January. And, um, and you can see here that the roof overhang has an extra gable. So there's a gable on each end. This has bay windows. So it meets that criteria. They do have foundations sometimes that are sticking out of the ground. They're still anchored in the ground. Pericoat is required to be in the ground at least eighteen inches. Uh, down here in the valley and two feet up at Lake Tahoe. So, um, so we are actually putting a stem wall in. And, uh, and this one has some brick around it. Uh, this is not permitted. You can't have a single wide in Douglas County anymore. There are a lot of them. I suspect that that's why, uh, they're still around is that once you, once. You remove it from the site, you can't put a single wide back on, which, uh, is a, is sometimes an issue, um, in, in the area. But it's not permitted. So here's the areas that we have as a manufactured home overlays. We have an area up in, um, up in Indian Hills. Uh, there's two zones on either side of, um, Vista Grande Boulevard. Uh, there's one on the left, the older parcels are half acre parcels. And then there's a SFR eight thousand zoning, so it's a little more dense. Um, so, uh, this area, I believe Indian Hills, a half acre zone could have an eight hundred square foot. Manufactured home put on it, uh, but I don't know. It, it just depends on where the house is existing on the lot. And if there's enough room for all this, to meet all the setback requirements. Uh, so those would have to be analyzed at each, each permit, um, application. Kings Lane, Aspen Park, Oxabee Park, all are in the multi-family residential zones. Uh, Stonegate, uh, fairly recent project came forward. They, they put theirs in a manufactured home. Uh, I'm sorry, multi-family residential zone as well. Uh, so none of these can have, um. None of these, this, this zone doesn't allow an accessory dwelling in them. Um, there's an RV park down by the river, uh, as you head towards Runestrough, right on the right-hand side, if you go down. Uh, I think Crockett owns it today, uh, Crockett Trust, and it's an SFR one zoning. But it's a one parcel, one overall parcel with the, with the whole, uh, manufactured homes all on the one, one parcel. So they too wouldn't be allowed to have an accessory dwelling on those either. Uh, the RV park, uh, down at two oh eight, uh, there's two of them. There's one on the, on the east side of three ninety-five. And, and that's in a tourist commercial zone. Um, somehow that got approved. And then the one on the right, uh, I think you access off of Penrod, uh, lane. Is on, in a RA five acre zone. And it appears to me, looking at that site, that we have one parcel. Uh, with multiple homes on it in the manufactured home overlay, uh, to create that park. So, um, they would have to come back in with their plan and do modification if they added any more structures to that. And then you've got the TRE, uh, Topaz Ranch Estates. That is fairly, pretty much all SFR two, uh, zoning. There are two areas that are in RA five on either side. When the more north of the subdivision right here, and then to the, right here over the number two oh eight. It does have, uh, some five acre parcels, SFR five. You'll see that on a slide down the road here. But, uh, Topaz Ranch Estates would be allowed to have an accessory dwelling installed on them. It has to be eight hundred square feet or less. And you, um, and we have the SFR two zone underneath it with the overlay. Because of the overlay already allows, um, a manufactured home to be installed on the property. They don't have to meet those design criteria that we discussed earlier. Um, so you can just order a manufactured home with the standard overhang, no architectural features. And install it, uh, out there in Topaz. So I, we identified, um, the, I have the overlays, uh, on this map as well as the zoning. And so the stars will indicate all the five acre zones, SFR five acres. Um, that we have throughout the county. And then the triangle, we have one area of, uh, SFR ten or RA ten, uh, zoning, which is right here at Orchard. It's a slightly different color green, uh, but that it's just between basically Toller. And, um, Buckeye on Orchard Road. And that's where all the ten acre parcels are at. That's the only ten acre zone that we have in Douglas County. And here's a kind of a higher level of Topaz, kind of showing the, the red. So the red is the manufactured home overlay, all the, all the roads, uh, the way the overlay works in GIS. This is the best I could do. Uh, with this image, but you can see our north of here on, on TRE. So this is the TRE area. North of TRE is a five acre zone, and then all of this area here is five acres. And then across the street. The Elephant Ranch has five acres. There's five acres to the west and in all of these areas and five acre zoning. Uh, all the way up to, uh, almost to Leviathan Mine Road, which is up, up in here. So that little valley before you start going down the hill to two oh eight, uh, is also in a five acre zone area. Here's a blow up of, of TRE, uh, SFR two. You can see the RA five over here. And then also RA five over on this side. And then, of course, all of this open, open area. None of this has been built out yet. We are getting a few manufactured homes out in TRE, uh, in the Wellington area towards, towards Line County. Um, they are building, uh, or installing a manufactured home out here, but it's usually on like a twenty acre piece of property. As the main dwelling, that's allowed already as a, to have a, an accessory dwelling on those larger parcels. Uh, as a manufactured home. But we have the, the two RV parks that I was referring to. This one's in RA five over here off of three ninety-five on either side. And this one's the tourist commercial zone. You can see that there. So we have the four findings that you'll find on packet page forty-two. That, uh, the staff believes all the findings can be made to recommend approval to the county commissioners. Uh, for the proposed zoning text amendment DA twenty-two zero two zero one. And recommends approval of the proposed ordinance. Twenty twenty-two, sixteen ten. And I'm available for any questions.
Before we get to questions for Tom, I would like to move to Bryce. He was, there was a committee meeting between Tom Delair, Bryce Klutz, Mark Gardner. And there was one other individual present, was there not? Patrick Hates. And they discussed the changes to the ordinance. And I would like Bryce to present what happened at that meeting because he represented the Planning Commission. And after Bryce makes his comments, then I would appreciate Tom to be available for questions from the Planning Commission.
Sure.
Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so my understanding, the purpose of the meeting was to get the different stakeholders together. Um, and try to, to kind of find a common sense approach to this particular issue. Um, which really came down to if there is a manufactured home. On a piece of property that is permitted to have an accessory dwelling. Then why doesn't it make sense for the accessory dwelling to also be a manufactured home where today? It's, it's mandated that it has to be stick-built. Um, and so there was a lot of conversation around that. Um, in, in trying to come up with some sort of compromise from what we had heard, uh, back in January. So, uh, again, not an overly complicated issue, not a complicated meeting. Um, and what came as a result of that meeting was the, was the text that we see here today.
That's it? That's so easy. Are there questions for either Bryce or Tom from the Commissioners? Mr. Slade?
Um, Tom, if you could go back to the big, oh, there, then I guess that maybe is the beginning of your presentation. And, and did you say that was page thirty-three? Anyhow, I believe you did, and it's, it's thirty-five on my, the page numbers I have. So there seemed to be some confusion there, but I managed to find it. As, uh, some of the planning commissioners may have noted, I asked, uh, Mr. Delair a number of questions. Yesterday morning, and he has provided the answers in writing here. So thank you for doing that, Tom. My first question was whether this was initiated by Mr. Pike, and, and Tom said that it was. Um, so he brought this forward. And in reading the, um, agenda packet. It seemed to me like it was, you know, we were changing the ordinance to accommodate one person. And, and which is why I asked how many other, um, parcels might, uh, be in the same situation. And, uh, the answer I got was, as, as you can see, if you have that paper before you, this is going to take some time. I do not have access to this information. Um, so coming into the meeting today, as far as I could tell, this was only on, uh, affected one parcel. Because the little I know about the county, I don't think very many people that have, are in RA five or RA ten zoning. Put manufactured homes on them. That is what some realtors would call planned obsolescence. And I also asked if there were any other factors that needed to be considered on this item, and, uh, Tom didn't know any. But in my research, when I, when I looked up Mr. Penrod's one property. I discovered that, um, I don't know if anyone else noticed, that, that the building value on his property in twenty twenty was. Uh, something over two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And in twenty twenty-one, it was under fifteen thousand dollars. So that seemed odd until I looked at the photograph. Which showed that his property had been torched, uh, apparently by the Tamrac wildfire. So now I'm certainly happy to try to help out Mr. Pike and his situation. I've been burned out of his home. And, um, although I would, my thought coming into this meeting is that I would rather give him a variance. Than to change the law for the whole county. And as far as I could tell, coming into this meeting, maybe his was the only home that was affected by this. Now, just now, I find out, no, there's all these homes in TRE. And, you know, I feel like that's been sprung on us at the last minute. And that's never a good idea to bring that sort of information to the commission at the last minute. I came into this meeting thinking we were talking about one parcel and maybe no others. So I find that unfortunate. Tom, could you go to the, uh, the next picture with the bait gable building with the manufactured home in the front? Think that's the next slide. Yeah, that one. Is that gable building in the background? Is that a manufactured home?
Yeah, converted to real property.
Oh, wow. It's a tall building for a manufactured home. Okay. I was just curious about that. It didn't appear to be a manufactured home to me, but I guess I'm not that familiar with manufactured homes. So now that I've learned that there are so many other homes that might be affected by this at the last minute. It's. My opinion that this item should be continued. And there's one other reason why I believe it should be continued. And that is if you look at page thirty-four in the packet. Um, at least that's what my packet says, thirty-four. And this is the ordinance itself. And you look just below the middle of the page, and it says. Uh, Douglas County Code is hereby amended with a new language shown in red underline and deleted language shown with a strike through as follows. And I go, oh, good. Well, it'll show exactly what's being changed. So then I flipped through all the rest of the pages, and there's not a single thing that struck through or underlined in red. So I went, well, that's not helpful. I can't tell what's been changed. I don't have a copy of the current ordinance. By the way, I found it really hard to find one online eventually either. Um, the new county code section is very difficult to navigate, in my opinion. So, um. You know, the fact that it doesn't clearly show the changes to the ordinance, which is the essence of what we're being asked to vote on here today. You know, we shouldn't learn about the change when it is in red, underlined at the meeting, any more than we should find out. How many dozens or hundreds of other properties are affected by this thing? So, um, I believe this item should be continued. And it would be hard for me to support it otherwise at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Bryce, you have your hand up?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. A point of clarification on this issue. I respect Mr. Slade's opinions, um, but I want to correct a statement that he made that I believe is incorrect. And that is that Mr. Pike brought this forward. Uh, Mr. Pike did not bring it forward. Mr. Pike started a zoning text amendment, and the chairman of the county commission actually brought it forward. Um, and has stated that, that this particular item, uh, is a concern of his, uh, and his constituents. I also went back and read the meeting minutes from our January meeting. And I, I find ourselves going down the same road today that we went down that day. Uh, which is the discussion about whether we agree with whether manufactured homes should or shouldn't be in certain areas. And that's not what's before us here today. What's before us here today is the fact that you can have an accessory dwelling where there is a manufactured home, but it must be stick-built. This simply changes that from being stick-built to also being a manufactured home. If the primary residence is also a manufactured home. So I just wanted to clarify both of those points.
Kirk?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. A couple of quick questions. Uh, first of all, Sam Taylor. Uh, Jim points out that the, the description talks about the underline and red and strike-throughs. And, uh, I think that was probably just a, a carryover from other generic language. So the actual text of the change is on my packet page thirty-five under B one. And it contains a new section one, and then three words in a new section two. Is that correct, Sam Taylor? That's the, the only change that's being made? And it's in italics, uh, rather than red or underlined?
Um, yeah, Sam Taylor, for the record, Douglas County District Attorney's Office. That is correct. And in this case, um, the fact that it was, um, italicized as opposed to underlined is just a. Minor sort of problem that wouldn't necessarily negate our ability to hear this or move this item forward. It's clear that the italicized language is what was being proposed. Um, also, in addition to that, staff and, um, even myself now, I mean, confirm that, yes, that is what is in fact being changed. And moreover, the title to the, to the code revision, as well as the agenda, made it clear which section was being revised. So I think a person of ordinary reasonable intelligence would be able to ascertain what specific language was being modified if they just examined the packet.
Thank you very much, Sam. It's, it's basically thirty words that are being changed. Uh, and then secondly, uh, I want to follow up on what Bryce said as well. I did review the minutes of the meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, where the Planning Commission took this up. We had quite an extensive discussion. It was very clear at the time that this was a generic change. Uh, it might have been initiated by an individual, but it was a generic change. It, uh, It encompasses a large number of people. And obviously, Tom, it's very difficult to figure out what lot in what area might have applicability. But I think that's very clear that this is a generic change, a good generic change. It gives more options to more people to do what they want to do, not what the county tells them they have to do. And then one question that came up, Tom, if you could answer, and I think we had this discussion in our last meeting, is a manufactured home versus a stick-built home. Would they necessarily have to be inferior for the manufactured home, less in cost, less in quality? Or can a manufactured home exceed the quality or the cost of a stick-built home?
Good question, Mr. Walder. I think that the manufactured home has some options that you can add to it. I don't know if it would ever get to the quality of what you could do, you know, building-wise from a stick-built. But in either case, the way it's assessed and taxed is what Trent has, and I give you guys all a letter from Trent on Mr. Nedrev's question to me at our pre-meeting. And so he has provided how they actually do the assessments. But from what I gather in my conversations with Mr. Thuland is that he evaluates it based on the amount of the manufactured home, whatever that cost was, and then applies it to or adds to the foundation, all the dirt work, you know, the site improvements that have been made, similar to a site-built home. And then they take that value of the manufacturer home as part of their evaluation for the depreciation for the next fifty years. And when it gets converted to real property, the depreciation changes from twenty-five years to fifty years. So taxes on a manufactured home brought into an area where you have stick-built homes, it's treated the same way, which is why we had problems with GIS having issues trying to dig into the data to find out where those are. I did receive an email while I was doing my presentation from David, and I can answer some of Mr. Slade's questions now, the specific to the number. It's a...
Okay. But let's go back to the whole quality issue. You can build a stick-built home pretty cheap, and you can cut a lot of corners, and it cannot be of substantial quality. And when somebody talks about planned obsolescence, when you build an accessory dwelling and it's a manufactured home, I would think you could have a high-quality manufactured home. I've seen some of them are $500,000 for a manufactured home. That's going to last a long time. It's going to be a quality facility. And again, I would say that we've had this discussion in January. I think it'd be a citizen's right. If they want to build a stick-built home, they can build a stick-built home. If they want to build a manufactured home, they can build a manufactured home. We're not diminishing the quality of the facility or anything else. I think it's a public option. So I wanted to make sure we had those points on the record.
Right. And then also, in addition to that, the accessory dwellings, which is what we're trying to discuss here today, is required in code today to be a stick-built structure. There's no options. There's no variance. It's not allowed. And that's the stance that we've been taking on this. That's why Mr. Pike has been, you know, kind of waiting for this to be modified so that he can put an accessory dwelling on his property. That is, it did burn down in a Tamarack fire, but what burned down was a manufactured home, his main residence, and a stick-built accessory dwelling. It's just now it costs $400,000 for this stick-built accessory dwelling, and he can get one for 120. And that's, you know, the main issue for him.
Yeah. But again, this is a generic change. It may apply to fifty other people. We don't know. And that's a good way to do planning, is to allow people to have options.
And you're exactly right. The number from the GIS department today, Mr. Slade, is fifty-three. There are fifty-three parcels in Douglas County outside of the manufactured home overlays that have a manufactured home on them.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate your responses.
Yeah, thank you.
Bryce, do you have a comment or a question? If it's just a comment, I need to open public comment since this is for possible action. Can you hold your comment until?
I just had a clarification, Madam Chair, but I'll hold it. Your pleasure.
Okay. I'd like to open this for public comment since this is for possible action. Please come to the podium, sign in, please, and announce your name for the record.
There we go. For the record, my name is Susan Fisher. I'm with the law firm of McDonnell Carano in Reno, Nevada, and I represent Nevada Housing Alliance, which is a statewide association for manufactured home dealers and related vendors. And we've worked very closely with staff. We appreciate all the time and effort that they've given to us in explaining things. The one thing that I do want to, we very much support this ordinance. We proposed ordinance change. With regard to a variance, current ordinance does not allow a variance for one individual. Current ordinance allows for a modular home or a site-built home. And I will explain the difference here. I never say stick-built because manufactured homes are stick-built homes. They're just built in a factory and brought in segments and units. So they are stick-built. They're very energy efficient. They're very valuable homes. They retain their value. These are not your 1976 trailer houses. These are beautiful, quality homes. So we appreciate your consideration of this. This is not done just for Mr. Pike, and I will share with you that during the time that it's taken to seek an ordinance change, his mother has passed away, and he's not going to be putting in the accessory dwelling on that property at this time. But one of his neighbors has a plan to do so. And just for all of the others that may be able to do so, because you already have the option to put in a modular home as an ADU. And we just think that it makes sense to be able to put in a manufactured home because there's really no structural difference between the two. They look the same. There is a letter that I had submitted that's on the back page of the supplementary documents that were provided to you. And it shows side-by-side comparison between modular homes and manufactured homes. And I would challenge anybody to be able to spot the difference just from looking at them. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Bryce? Oh, I'll close public comment seeing no one else rise. Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was the point that I was reminded in Mr. Delair's presentation that one of the items in the meeting that we had, that we spent quite a bit of time clarifying, and Ms. Fisher just alluded to, is that I think we want to be careful. The code stipulates stick-built. But as she mentioned, a modular manufactured home is stick-built. And when we had our meeting, I was able to clarify, as a commercial builder, we have built a number of modular hotels. These modular units are manufactured in a factory. They're built of all the same products that we would build a hotel on a site. So those are considered site-built hotels, where you have a foundation, and then you frame it on-site and you go vertical. The only difference between building a modular hotel or a manufactured home and a site-built condition is that it's built in a factory and then it's brought out to the site. I would challenge that for the layman in the room who've never seen a modular or pre-manufactured hotel, from the outside, you would never know that it was a pre-manufactured or a modular, as it's called in that particular market segment, that you would ever be able to tell the difference. One of them is a Spring Hill Suites in Truckee, and one of them is a Courtyard Marriott in Petaluma, California. And there have been many, many others that have been built throughout the country this way. So I wanted to clarify again that we're talking about the difference between a manufactured home and a site-built, not whether, to Mr. Waller's point, that it's an inferior or superior quality. It's built from the same lumber, same drywall, same everything.
Thank you, Bryce. Are there questions for Tom? Jim?
I'm not sure that I really have any more questions for Tom, but I would like to say something before we vote, before the motion is made. I just want to make it clear that I'm not opposed to manufactured homes as primary dwellings or accessory dwellings or hotels, for that matter. That's not really my concern here at all. I appreciate the clarification from Member Clutz. It does say that Mr. Pike started the zoning map amendment submittal, but then it was the county manager and the chairman, I believe that's Chairman Gardner, who brought this thing forward. So thank you for that clarification. You are correct. I, of course, was not on the Planning Commission last January, so I had no, and I have no idea if I attended that meeting. Probably not. I have no recollection of that. And no minutes from that meeting were included, so I was not aware of any of that. And there were no mention of any other properties that this would apply to. And now, at the meeting, Tom has provided me with a number and the vague description of, oh, and wherever a manufactured overlay is. So that, to me, is brand-new information. And I think it's inappropriate that that be only brought up at the meeting itself. We always try to get as much information out early as possible, not at the last minute, except when absolutely necessary, which was not the case this time. As to whether or not the change section has a red underline on it. If it had said it was in italics, I would have looked for italics. It says the changes are red and underlined. So I flipped through the pages, all two, four, six pages of it, and I see nothing red and underlined. I think it's unreasonable for you to suggest that we should go back and try to figure out if there's some other identifying mark. So I think that's inappropriate as well. And I might well vote for this if I had all the information upfront. As it is, I will either abstain, or if I'm not allowed to abstain, I will vote no. And maybe the deputy district attorney could tell me if I can just abstain.
Microphone's off, so Sam can respond.
Sam Taylor, Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Under the bylaws for the Plan Commission, if you're present and you've heard the matter and you've heard all the information being provided to you, there is a general sort of suggestion and requirement that you refrain from abstaining as much as possible. And it's also in the OML as well. There is no OML violation here. It was just a minor sort of issue or error with respect to how the modified language was being identified. Instead of being underlined in red, it was italicized, which, quite frankly, is norm for pretty much most of the ordinances that are ever presented to this body or the Board of County Commissioners. So it's not out of the ordinary to see it in this format. Again, it's just a minor error, and staff and myself have indicated where the matter is being changed, as well as the text of the agenda even indicates where the modifications are occurring. Again, I think it's reasonable to conclude. Anybody looking at that would know that the italicized language is what is in fact being modified. If you insist that that is not the case and you don't feel comfortable, you can abstain. So there's no unlawfulness to that per se, but, you know, you're being urged by both the OML and the bylaws to participate.
May I respond briefly? So you say that it's the habit to do it in italics. Yet when I look at our package for the next item, it's underlined and red, the changes in the ordinance. When I look at what Mr. Delair brought to us today, it's red and underlined. So to suggest that it's always italicized is wrong. That's not my biggest concern, no. My biggest concern, and I'm not suggesting that it should be an open meeting law violation. I'm not going to file one of those, even though I'm not afraid to do so. My main concern is that there was, is the lack of information provided to me, a relatively new planning commissioner, as to what was actually under consideration here. I honestly thought, walking in today, that this probably only applied to Mr. Pike. And so I think that's inappropriate. And even though on another day I might vote in favor of this, I will not.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, Sam.
Yeah, I just, Sam Taylor, again, for the record, I just wanted to make it really clear. I didn't say that always ordinances are presented with italics. I said they're often, usually presented with italics. The fact that this is different and is presented with underline and red does not necessarily change the fact that most of the ordinances I've seen being presented to the Board of County Commissioners and Plan Commission in the past, not talking about today, are in fact modified in that fashion. They use italics.
Thank you, Sam. Ken?
Chairwoman Marine, I concur with Commissioner Bryce and Commissioner Kirk on the change being, an existing manufactured home may have an accessory building. As a manufactured building, I'm in favor of this code change, and I move that we make a vote.
Are there other comments from Commissioners? Bryce?
Madam Chair, I have a comment, but I know that Mr. Nedrev has been very patient. Is there something that you want to comment on before I do?
Okay, we do have a motion on the table. Can we get a second, and then we'll have discussion? Is that appropriate?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I think the motion was just to have a motion. Is that correct, Mr. Paxton? Or was the motion to approve the item?
It was a motion for a vote on this code change.
To approve it?
To approve it.
So that would be a motion.
Okay, so I need a second, and then we can have a discussion.
Madam Chair, I would second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Ken and a second from Kirk. Now discussion.
So I would just like to point out that I did have a discussion with Tom. And because these are all accessory dwelling units, they all have to go through planning. They'll have to look at the septic systems. If they're putting in a new one, it'll go through design review. If it's an existing one, they have to make sure the capacity is there. They have to pay all of the taxes, the park fee, the road taxes, the school taxes. So this is another rooftop. And I think that planning will do a very good job in making sure that these accessory dwelling units are built according to Douglas County standards.
Other comments from Commissioners?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just another point of clarification regarding Mr. Slade's comments. Although I was present at the January eleventh, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, I did not recall that that's when that Planning Commission meeting took place. And when we heard this issue before, I had the same ability as he does to go onto the website and pull the minutes or watch the video of that Planning Commission meeting to go back and refresh my memory on the issues that were discussed. And have done so a number of times on Planning Commission meetings that had occurred in the past, where there was relevant information to a potential issue that was being heard before the Planning Commission that I was now a member of. So I think the fact that the minutes from that meeting were not available or presented doesn't negate the fact that they were available.
David?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement that while I probably will vote for this amendment, that I understand Mr. Slade's position on the, where it says red type and underlined. I think that if we're going to put that into this process, that it should be done so. I think that italicized is different, and it states one specific thing. And so I do agree with Mr. Slade. Staff should be more careful to make sure that the whole thing is correct all the way through. Thank you.
I understand that. I did look for the underline. And I did call and say, I don't see anything in red. So I was told italicized. And I am not normally in favor... And I am not normally in favor of amending code for one individual. I'm still smarting from the helicopter zoning change when we changed the, um, the zoning code for the entire county to fuel the helicopter business to allow him to refuel his helicopter off site over by the business park. Yeah, but as I understand, Tom, this is to clean up Title 20. And so therefore I am in favor of this, uh, item. And Jim, I would ask you if there are any findings that you can give for the record that you don't support? If not, uh, just make a brief statement on why you don't support this item. Tom, do you have something to say?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Um, I did you, so the document, um, program that we use, Peak, um, used this Word file that, uh, that you see up on the screen here, which is I underline and italicized. Um, and in red, for some reason in the document, uh, when it got converted into whatever, I think PDF, it, it did modify that and we didn't catch it. So I just want to let you know, we, we, the document does have that stuff in it. Um, it wasn't a black lined, uh, just italics only. Uh, it was underlined and I don't know what happened with that conversion, but, uh, we've learned on the next item. We learned that I have to print it to a PDF before I upload it into Peak. So just so, you know, things like this was most of the conversation I thought I'd clarify.
Yes, I understood. I got that and, uh, no blame, just, uh, yeah, it does. New, new programs are a drag. Thank you, Tom. Jimmy, you have something to say?
Well, i- if, if it had said the changes would be italicized, I would have looked for italicized changes. It specifically said that they would be read and underlined. That's why I missed it. I did, uh, all of you were on the planning commission, I believe, in January, even though you didn't see the meetings. I'm sure you remember the gist of what was discussed. To me, as a new planning commissioner, when I looked at it today, it appeared to only apply to one property. And I resent the fact that I only learned here at the meeting that that was not the case. So I have not had a chance to look at the required findings in that regard. And so, um, and I did try to go back and look at the minutes and the recordings previously. We have a new system apparently for accessing prior meetings and county code. And I find it much harder to navigate. I'm not a total neophyte when it comes to using computers. I tried to look up something from a county commissioner meeting yesterday and I couldn't get any further back than September 15th. Um, and I tried to find the county code sections that I wanted and I couldn't figure out how to do them. I asked someone at the county for help and I wasn't, um, offered any help. So, um, I find it very frustrating and since I'm being discouraged to abstain, even though on another day I might vote yes, I will vote no.
We have a motion by Ken and a second from Kirk on the floor. Do we have a, a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? We have, uh, six ayes and Jim Slate voting no.
Chairman Marine? May we take a break?
Yes, we will resume at five after two, ten minutes.
Let the fun begin.
Calling the planning commission back to order, running five minutes late for possible action discussion on a zoning text amendment, DP 22 dash zero two zero two, ordinance 2022 dash 1612, an ordinance to amend Douglas County Code's section 20.100 to prohibit residential individual sewage disposal systems, ISDS, on parcels less than two acres net in size and add provisions for the standard on how septic systems are designed, adding operational duties of individual sewage disposal systems and chapter 20.650 for clarifying the zoning districts where municipal water and sewer systems are required and other properly related matters. Presenting Tom De Laire. Tom?
Thank you, Chairwoman Casey, uh, for that. Uh, Tom De Laire for the record, uh, Community Development Director. And so, um, so basically, uh, on page 48 of your packet, um, was the ordinance. It, it starts, um, there's an introduction to that, so it's right at the top of the page. It, we can go through this real quick, um, exception, or number B gives us exceptions in, uh, it's 2100, 050, section B, uh, exceptions, and we changed public to municipal. Uh, this was a recommendation by the DA's office. Uh, we have a number of municipalities that do provide sewer services in Douglas County. Uh, MGSD, Lake Tahoe, and then, um, Indian Hills has their own. And we do accept, um, the, the treated water from Yggid actually in North Valley as well. But, uh, so we do have a lot of municipal, municipalities that do provide this service. So he wanted to make it, uh, clear as to what that was, and it wasn't public municipal was the word, uh, is my understanding for the modification. We added, um, the individual sewage disposal system shall be designed in accordance with Nevada Administrative Code, sections 444750 through 444, uh, point eight three nine six inclusive. Uh, we don't have a section in code explaining to the public today on how you design a septic system. Uh, NAC is a state Nevada administrative code and that section is where you will find those provisions. I can't remember the year, uh, that the state of Nevada gave the county the responsibility of septics. I want to say around 2010, 2011, uh, and they, um, they, they no longer issue permits for individual sewage disposal systems for residents. Uh, our building department does that. The, uh, this section was never added to code and it needs to be in here, uh, so that we have that as an enforcement mechanism. Um, also the next item that we added, uh, to code was no ISDA. So it's the individual sewage disposal system, septic system is what we're going to call it, uh, shall be installed on any parcel less than two acres net, uh, for any parcel created after January 31st, 2023. Uh, this provision gives us a little bit of time after, uh, the Board of County Commissioners hears this. If, um, we were planning to go to the board as a introduction on November 17th, it'll go to the board for the second reading on December 15th. We are here today looking for your recommendations to take to the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, I've got to get that done this afternoon so I can get it posted in the packet, uh, by tomorrow. So, um, then when the packet gets posted, I think they're trying or shooting for that posting by tomorrow afternoon. So I need to get, uh, what you guys have, uh, for recommendations to them this afternoon. Um, then this third item is an engineered denitrification system will be required on all parcels, two acres or less. And that's, I'm, I'm fine with that. I know Jim had mentioned earlier on his questions and that I gave you, like, I did mention one and a half. I don't run the utility. Phil Richter from Republic Works Director in Douglas County runs the sewer utility. And so I want to work with him in order to get some, some, some sort of code revision done. I provided those sections in my staff report. We can hit on those a little bit later if you'd like. But septics in the, in general, on how it works, there's, there's a couple of things that, you know, you guys would, I think everybody in the public needs to know. Hopefully though, they'll see this, but, but when it comes into the septic tank, that first. That first chamber is where a lot of the sludge is gonna, is gonna settle. And, and eventually that tank gets smaller and smaller in size because of that volume of sludge. And that's why we need to have a pump come out, a pumper truck come out and, and clean out that septic tank. When, once it gets cleaned, it becomes a little more efficient because the wastewater is sitting in that chamber a lot longer. So there is a lot of variables to a septic tank, the number of people, how many houses, how many people live in the homes and how large of a home it is. If you have, you know, a lot of visitors or kids coming and their families, you know, you could overload this first chamber and prematurely discharge. Sewage into your leach lines, which then causes the failure. The leach lines in this image is right here. It's downstream of the septic tank. And we do have, basically it's a perforated pipe and it goes into a, a channel with a bunch of rock. And it's probably usually around two or three feet deep. Most of the time it's a little deeper. And we have to have a minimum of four foot separation between the groundwater and the, the bottom of that chamber, that, that pad. So there are some mounds out in the Mandol of Douglas County. I think if most of you have animals here. Have visited the Carson Valley Vets Office and in the back you'll notice some very large mounds. And that's their septic field. That's an engineered sand mound. And it, the groundwater at the time was at, at the surface. So they brought in four feet of fill. They brought in another eighteen inches or two, two, I think it was two feet of sand on top of that. And then there's a cap. So it was fairly, very tall mounted, a fairly large structure. And then, and then there's some protective cover and, and some slopes on the side that meet their criteria in that NAC code. And so, so there's a lot of options there that you have for this field. It's not always just in the ground and you're, you're utilizing the native soil for treatment. But Douglas County staff was directed by the board on February eighteenth of twenty twenty-one. To enter into two contracts with the USGS, the US Geological Survey. On the Nevada Water Service Center. And what they're doing, they're evaluating right now and they're under contract through, through twenty twenty-four. To evaluate the effects of groundwater management options on. Water resources in the Carson Valley. That contract was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, and then they also approved on the same day, item number three. To evaluate the status of the water levels arsenic and nitrates in Douglas County alluvial aquifer. And to develop an interactive web-based tool for visuals, visualization and hydro, hydrologic data. So we are in a contract right now with them. They are going and getting the data. I don't have access to that data. I'm not the project manager on this contract or these contracts. And I, I need to reach out to Phil to, to determine really what that's going to look like. But I believe that the plan at the county manager level was to get some sort of program where we can start monitoring nitrates on our own. We don't have that today. It's been an item in the implementation plan and the master plan for some time. And when we need to get that program put together, this is the first step. We need to know where we're at, where we're going to start. And then we develop a program after that. So the code, I think, needs to be, you know, massaged slightly in order to start tracking that thing. To track those nitrates, to track where those problems are at. And I, and I need access to that data so that staff can, can evaluate it in a more efficient manner. Because right now it's really difficult to, to locate. So what is nitrate? So nitrates have, have a, an issue with the consumption. So it's no nitrates would enter the supply of water for anyone to consume. That's, that's ideal. And the only way that that is going to happen is if we put, we get rid of the septic systems right altogether and connect everybody. On, onto a sewer system and the sewer system then gets treated. And then it goes into ponds and, and then gets further treated and then it finally gets as an effluent and into the Carson River down the road. It's the wetlands in North, for Douglas County specifically, it's in North Valley is the treatment area, treatment plant. And then Yggid's wetlands is, is just north of that. And, and the recommendations officially state, so the, the EPA, federal EPA. Sets recommendations on the limits of nitrates and it's set today at ten milligrams per liter. And so the, there's a lot of sources in our valley for, for nitrates. Septic systems is probably the largest one, but animals, the fertilizer that we use in our, in our fields. And, and, and will eventually create nitrates as well in, in our groundwater. So it's, the septic systems is a contributing factor. This is an interesting link. A lot of data here. I did, I did leave that on here. So you can, you can look at that or Google it. And take a look at more information, but there's, this was a pretty good website and I found a lot of useful information on it when I was doing research. So what are the dangers of nitrates? The primary danger is of human consumption of nitrates is the conversion of nitrates. Nitrates have negative impacts on red blood cells and their ability to carry oxygen to the necessary organs. And it's a pretty, pretty serious issue. It causes blue baby syndrome. I'm not going to try and pronounce the official. Lingo of that if you want to, it's right here on the screen, but I'm, I'm not sure I can pronounce that. The, the, the nitrates in your water, what I thought was interesting on this piece is that they are recommending. That each individual homeowner that has a well. Needs to monitor the nitrate levels. Anything above five milligrams per liter should be tested each year. Not every five years, not every twenty years, but every year. Or several times a year to see if there are levels of, that fluctuate, which is interesting. So it throws it back on the homeowner is responsible, making sure that he's not contaminating. You know, the neighboring well or that you're drinking clean water. The NAC, which is the code that we use for the sewer design, has a nitrogen, nitrogen. Nitrogen removal wastewater treatment unit is defined as a nitrogen removal wastewater treatment unit means that the system. Receives sewage and through a biological denitrification, chemical reduction in ion exchange reduces the nitrogen level of the effluent. You guys know what that means? So basically it's air, we, and there is a unit here and I've called the NDP, I've emailed them. I have not got a response back yet to see who to talk to, but I'm want to, I'm curious that this is allowed in, in Nevada as a unit. Back in, you know, two thousand and ten, when the state of Nevada was managing the septic systems, all the septic systems that were installed went to the state for a permit. They had a list of approved units that would be allowed to use, be used in the state of Nevada, including Douglas County. And I don't know if this is the case anymore. I'm trying to find that out now, but this is a system, it's nine hundred bucks. And it's a retrofit. You can throw this in your existing septic tank today and make it way more efficient. And what it does is it adds air to that first chamber in the tank that we showed here. So you would throw it in this tank, you would add air to that, it turns the bacteria in the septic tank from anaerobic to aerobic. And when you do that, you have the bacteria that eats the sewage and breaks it down much more efficiently because it's being fed oxygen. And so just that system by itself will help the nitrate problem in the county. And so, so looking at some sort of program, you know, maybe we need to look at a program that would allow this to be done throughout the county. Getting to the lot size, in NAC, the maximum or the minimum area of one acre is required for the septic system. And that includes public streets and alleys or other public right of ways, lands or any. Portion, I don't know why that's cut off up there, but therefore abutting on running through or within a building site is required. For the installation of the individual sewage disposal system on a lot served by a well. So what I want to make sure you guys are understanding is that. And if you have a road which you have to have access to your parcel, so usually there's a road in front of your property. Today, if it was a new project, it would be sixty foot right away. Sometimes they dedicate that part of the lot. Has to be dedicated as the road, so they eat up their portion, that thirty feet of area. You can use that in your determination of the, that one acre minimum site. Also, if there's a pedestrian easement or a side road or something else north of this parcel, you could use half of that area. So technically to get a two acre site net. You, you basically in this particular example with a four hundred foot deep lot, two hundred and seventeen point eight foot wide. You could get a hundred and seven, one point seven eight acres parcel. And still meet the two acre requirement per the NAC. So we do have that, that we need to combat as well with this. It's just a two acre site is, is, I just want to make sure it's, everybody's clear that the two acres includes the right of way. Per NAC and it allows, it allows it in the, in the state regulations. So that's got to be, I, I think it's got to be allowed or we have, or we're going to have to put another appendix B together that says we're. We're changing that paragraph and, and we need to clarify that. But I think we can leave it. It still allows the two acre area. You know, it's just the actual parcel may be a little bit smaller than that. It's just includes the right of way because that area is never going to be built on. In the future, we did run into this problem down in Topass, so that's why I bring it up is that we do deal with it here in Douglas County. Okay, this is a complicated part. So staff, when their building permit application comes in. NDP is, is main control of NDP is on these watersheds. And so you can see the map here on the right. I'm, I apologize for the, for the video thing here. I can't make that smaller on my screen. It is smaller. It's gone. But on this one, I can't seem to get rid of it, but it's the state of Nevada. Has divided its, the whole state into these hydrologic areas and it's, I think it's like two pages. Of, of basins that is within the state. So I just cut this table out to show you Douglas County and the surrounding communities. And they broke out each hydrologic basin into this zone one oh five for, for Carson Valley. And, and they gave us the numbers. So associated with this map is a very complex list of. They call it appendix one, which is their policy for determining the maximum number of residences on septic systems per square mile to be permitted. And, and they, they talk about, and they use a circular square mile. So it's a radius set at. I think it was like twenty-nine, twenty-nine, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine feet is the radius. And you, we plop it on a map on, on where you want to put your property. Or where you want to put your, your proposed septic system and, and you see how many parcels have a septic system within that circular square mile. So just so I'm also disclosed to you guys, I do own one of these parcels that this is going to affect. I own this parcel right here. It's on Clappam Lane and it's a parcel in the back. I have an easement going to the front that's only thirty feet wide. So also in Douglas County code, if I tried to split that lot, I would need to dedicate a fifty foot or sixty foot wide right of way. And there are structures in front of my house that would prohibit me from doing that. So I can't split my lot, not because of denitrification, but because of access. So there are other rules that go into play when we start looking at all of these one acre parcels and that we'll talk about a little bit later. But I just want to disclose to you that this is my property. So if I look at my lot and I do this analysis, I'm at a hundred and eighty-two septics. Within that circular square mile and you'll notice that all of those are in Johnson Lane, right? So the one acre density is definitely too dense for that. And I think that the reason for that was that we were anticipating expanding the sewer system. We expanded the sewer system in Johnson Lane when, when Pine, when Pinion Hills Elementary School was built. They had to extend the sewer line and since then it's been expanding. A little bit here and there and we'll get into that a little bit more. But right now, if I went in and tried to build my house, I would be required by Jeremy. To install a denitrification system because my unit count for parcels with septics. Within that area is a hundred and eighty-two and what's allowed in Carson Valley is a hundred and seventeen. Our parcels are three hundred and thirty feet square. So usually there's a road in front of your property today. If it was a new project, it would be 60 foot right away. Sometimes they dedicate that part of the lot has to be dedicated as the road. So they eat up their portion, that 30 feet of area. You can use that in your determination of that one acre minimum site. Also, if there's a pedestrian easement or a side road or something else north of this parcel, you could use half of that area. So technically to get a two acre site net, you, you basically in this particular example with a 400 foot deep lot, 217.8 foot wide, you could get 107, 1.78 acres parcel and still meet the two acre requirement per the NAC. So we do have that, that we need to combat as well with this. It's just a two acre site is, is I just want to make sure it's, everybody's clear that the two acres includes the right away per NAC and it allows it in the, in the state regulations. So that's got to be, I, I think it's got to be allowed or we have, or we're going to have to put another appendix B together that says we're, we're changing that paragraph and we need to clarify that. But I think we can leave it. It still allows the two acre area. You know, it's just the actual parcel may be a little bit smaller than that. It's just includes the right away because that area is never going to be built on. In the future, we did run into this problem down in Topeka. So that's why I bring it up is that we do deal with it here in Douglas County. Okay, this is a complicated part. So staff, when their building permit application comes in, NDP is, is main control of NDP is on these watersheds. And so you can see the map here on the right. I apologize for the, for the video thing here. I can't make that smaller on my screen. It is smaller. It's gone. But on this one, I can't seem to get rid of it, but it's the state of Nevada has divided its, the whole state into these hydrologic areas. And it's, I think it's like two pages of, of basins that is within the state. So I just cut this table out to show you Douglas County and the surrounding communities. And they broke out each hydrologic basin into this zone 105 for Carson Valley. And, and they gave us the number. So associated with this map is a very complex list of, they call it appendix one, which is their policy for determining the maximum number of residences on septic systems per square mile to be permitted. And, and they, they talk about, and they use a circular square mile. So it's a radius set at, I think it was like 29, 29, 2,979 feet is the radius. And you, we plop it on a map on, on where you want to put your property or where you want to put your, your proposed septic system. And, and you see how many parcels have a septic system within that circular square mile. So just so I'm also disclosed to you guys, I do own one of these parcels that this is going to affect. I own this parcel right here. It's on Clapham Lane and it's a parcel in the back. I have an easement going to the front. That's only 30 feet wide. So also in Douglas County code, if I tried to split that lot, I would need to dedicate a 50 foot or 60 foot wide right away. And there are structures in front of my house that would prohibit me from doing that. So I can't split my lot, not because of denitrification, but because of access. So there are other rules that go into play when we start looking at all of these one acre parcels and that we'll talk about a little bit later. But I just want to disclose to you that this is my property. So if I look at my lot and I do this analysis, I'm at 182 septics within that circular square mile. And you'll notice that all of those are in Johnson Lane, right? So the one acre density is definitely too dense for that. And I think that the reason for this was that we were anticipating expanding the sewer system. We expanded the sewer system in Johnson Lane when, when Pine, when Penning Hills Elementary School was built. They had to extend the sewer line and since then it's been expanding a little bit here and there, and we'll get into that a little bit more. But right now, if I went in and tried to build my house, I would be required by Jeremy to install a denitrification system because my unit count for parcels with septics within that area is 182 and what's allowed in Carson Valley is 117. Our parcels are 330 feet square, right? And so if you look at the parcel just right here on the one below it. So I'm, I'm what? Three and a half parcels away, right? In the same area and we click on this one. Now we move, I don't know, it's probably 15, 17, 2,000 feet away, right from my house. And now we're at 78 septic systems. So he can put a standard septic system in and I would put a denitrification system in. So, and, and so what I was proposing in code, what we proposed is that anybody on a two acre last just does a denitrification system. And then it takes this out of it. It's a code requirement from here on out. If a septic fails in Johnson Lane, we make them do the install of that extra $1,000 unit as a retrofit and, and turns it into a denitrification system. That's what I would be proposing to the board. We also look at this down in, in Antelope Valley as well. So there is a number down in Antelope Valley. It's, it's down here. 106 is the, is the zone is the basin number 106 and it's 111 septics down there. So we look at all of those, but most of the properties down there are in a two acre zone or more, five acres you saw earlier in the last item. And the density isn't as an issue, as much of an issue down there as it is here. So it'd be interesting to see if, if one USGS is actually analyzing Antelope Valley. I don't think they are. I think they're specifically looking at the Carson, Carson Valley's aquifer. But, but it is, it is going to be some interesting data when we get it. So I just want to, any questions on that? Yeah. All right. So we did an analysis on the parcels. This has taken me a lot of time with, with David, David Alexander at GIS. Leah and Matt, those guys are so awesome. And I, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to find a lot of this data. We haven't been tracking it in the past and, and GIS is, it does keep quite a bit of data on each parcel and the assessors have done it over the years. And it makes things, tracking things a little easier. It's just we got to find the right link to get the data that we want. And there are 6,301 parcels with septic systems on them as of September 2022. So there are parcels that have two or more septic. So back in prior to me coming into as the community development director, we staff was requiring another septic system to be installed on a piece of property. If you added a garage with a bathroom or a shower, you would actually add another tank and a septic line, which also has to have a repair area for your leach field. So you have to identify that on the parcels. And recently, most recently, we have connected one parcel, one septic. And if you can pump to it, you can, you know, you, the treatment is the same. You're still treating, you know, toilet water and waste. And so, so we have been, you just have to design the septic system in order to accommodate that extra, those extra fixtures. So if your tank can accommodate that, that extra addition, then, then by all means you can connect to it. Otherwise you have to install a new one. And now you've got two tanks on your property to manage and maintain. But out of those, there's, so for the total septic systems, based on the information that Trent has in the assessor's office is 6,514 septic systems. So you go from 6,301 to 6,514. And you'll see that there's a number of parcels there that have two or more septics on them. So they are, septics are not allowed in the Tahoe Basin. That's been a rule for a very long time. And, and you'll know all the connections up there go to his municipal wastewater plant. And then it gets piped down the hill, you know, to us to, for the discharge of the actual treated water. And then, so Douglas County has 4,785 parcels in the single family residential one acre zone. That's as of September 2022 as well. The SFR1 is a single family residential zone with a one acre parcel size minimum. So you can go bigger, but it is minimum. Of those 4,785 parcels that are within the SFR1 zone, we have 283 parcels larger than two acres in size. So, so that's the number that this ordinance is affecting, 283 parcels. So of those 283 parcels, there are 30 vacant parcels is all, that's all we've got. Our inventory in one acre parcels is diminishing. And that's countywide. And so that could, those parcels could be divided today, but it depends on most of those, most of those parcels actually have, the 30 can be divided, but the other 253 of them are, have homes on them. So when I planned my house, I could split it. I did take that into account. I've got my house set so that my setbacks would work. But I just don't have access and I can't split the property today. But who knows, maybe down the road, the property next to me sells or gets the road put in and I could have access off of that, you know, who knows? But there, there are going to be a lot of properties. And what I've noticed when I was working with David on this, we would zoom in and look at the aerial. A lot of folks, you know, have their house set up on, you know, these areas are on the side of a hill or slope and they have, they have, have a garage or a barn or something else they've added to the property. And, and it's going to be difficult for them to come up with a plan to separate that parcel into two other parcels, you know, to parcel off one parcel. So, so I just want to make sure that that's, that we're clear on that. And of those 283 parcels, 78 parcels are four acres or larger. So that's what this code is really affecting. So Johnson Lane, Jack's Valley and Rune Strath were three areas. I think Mr. Now sad had mentioned in his comments at the board meeting. So I analyzed each of those. There are 81 parcels that are two acres or larger and three are vacant in Johnson Lane. Of those 81 parcels, 13 are four acres or larger. Jack's Valley has 16 parcels that are two acres in size or larger. One is vacant and Rune Strath has 44 parcels that are two acres in size and two are vacant. So we've got, was that five, six, six vacant properties just in those three areas that have the potential to be split. There are many properties and, you know, I just went over that where the homes and garages, barns, wherever located, it would prohibit them from splitting the property. I didn't do an evaluation on each of those lots, but we did look at a number of them. And I would say that a lot of these in the 81 parcels in those, in Johnson Lane would be difficult for them to actually split their property just because of where they place their house or the garage or the accessory structures. And you can't split a parcel and leave a garage on there and then sell it individually to for a house to be built. You have to have a house on the property. So, so the garage and the barn have to come, or the garage, the barn or the house all have to come together when you do the boundary line adjust or the parcel map. And you have to show that on there. So we went through and looked at all of those, the 205 parcels we identified in Douglas County. Johnson Lane has the 19 four acre parcels, three were vacant. Rune Strath has nine four acre parcels. And 10, if you count the parcel across the highway, and we'll see a map here on that in a second. 141 total parcels, two acres were, two acre parcels were identified. 23 parcels are four acres or larger in those three areas. Okay. All right. Sorry. I can crack clock talking closer to the mic. Is that good? Johnson, so Johnson Lane, we'll start with this. Basically each of these dots is a parcel with a septic. We did add the green lines that show the actual sewer mains in the, in the road. And so this is what GIS has to date. It's not current. There is currently a project going on right now on this particular piece of property that they're building one acre parcels on and they're going to connect to water and sewer. So this will be another area that is going to be developed, but it'll be like this parcel here where there's water and sewer on this, on these lots as well. So this is, this item went to the county commissioners in January where they were requesting that the staff was asking the county commissioners if they wanted to install laterals along this road. There's 34 parcels here with septics on them. This is Saratoga Street, I think is what it's called. And that particular sewer line is being extended from Vicki up. It is in our Douglas County sewer treatment, North, North Valley area, treatment area. And, and the county commission had a bill, I think of $108,000. So it ends up being like $3,500 each lot to extend a lateral to the property so that we can require them to.
Let's take a 10 minute break and to get the microphones working. All right. We'll be back at 10 minutes to three.
Okay. Yeah.
Announced a break. Let's take a 10 minute break.
Okay.
10 minutes. It is five to three and we will resume the planning commission meeting for Douglas County. Mr. Delair.
Thank you Chairman Casey. That's Tom Delair for the record. So these maps I prepared just to show you where these parcels are located within the three, basically the three areas that Mr. Nowitzki had brought up Johnson Lane, Rune Strath and Jackson Valley. So these red parcels are the four acre properties. Just to get you squared away, we're over here on the far left of the screen is, is the Highway 395. Johnson Lane is down here and Stephanie is right here in the middle. You can see these little dots on these parcels are the septic systems. These are the parcels with septic systems. So you're looking up, up here in this area that kind of expanded over the last 15 years or so. A lot of these parcels are already connected to sewer. You can see the sewer line going in front of these. And, and then this part property right here, we had a, I don't know, I think it's a pre-app submittal on it and it's an 80, they're proposing 80 more one acre properties and they'll be served by sewer and water as well. That's the proposal. So, so I did not include this particular one in, in the conversation in the analysis, but because we do have a pre-application that's moving forward, you guys should see it in January. The orange parcels here are the tan parcels. I'm not sure what color you'd call this. Yellow? Oh, come on. So, so these parcels are two acres or more. So you can see the difference with the two acre properties and the four acre properties. The four acre parcels would be able to split and be split in half. The orange ones technically today, unless this ordinance goes through, would be able to be split in half. But again, you can see all the orange parts or orange or tan parcels that have a dot on them, have homes and are most likely going to have a difficult time being split. But there are a few, like these two down here, they are close enough to the sewer that they would have to connect. It would be a requirement through that parcel map process. Here is Rune Strath area. Red, red again is four acre parcels or larger and, and each of these has a septic. So you see here, this one's doesn't have a septic. This is part of the Settle Meyer Ranches properties, not the actual pit. The pit is over here. And on these properties, but the Settle Meyer Ranches owns these two properties as well. But you see this one here has, is, is basically the vacant one. These two properties down here, this is the Crockett RV Park. And then, so it's a bunch of trailers on this particular one. I assume there's a septic system down there serving all of the trailers, a commercial septic system that the state would be governing and reviewing and, and making sure it's operational. And then this is Douglas County property owned land on that piece. So that's the four acre properties. But here are the two acres or more in Ruins Throth area. And then, so if we look at, and Johnson Lane has, has the ability to connect to sewer. This is Saratoga Springs. You can see all the parcels here. There's no septics out here. North trails, I think is what this little loop is. Again, served by sewer and water, no septics. But you have all these in between. These were parcels that were created long ago before the subdivision and, and have been on, on sewer. Vicki is of course higher in elevation than these parcels. So serving this, these properties, you'd have to come down here somehow and get a sewer line in and go up the road. So there is some, going to be some investment for sure. Again, we've got another sewer line. It's not in our GIS yet, but this one's being constructed today on Saratoga, going to this piece of property that's being developed with connections to water and sewer. But you've got a lot of parcels along this road here, along this road here that have properties and basically I did identify all those. I highlighted them. So you can see in red the 127 parcels that could be connected to a sewer main today. That doesn't include the 330 foot rule, whereas if a septic does fail, we do look at this map and determine if you're within 330 feet that oh, that you do connect to the, to the sewer system. I think my computer is having an issue. Great. Some reason it just logged me out. I can't continue with my slideshow. You have, do you have a charger? I don't know why it's. Yeah, yeah. Power. Do you guys have? You have the paper version, right? Should we continue it through the paper? Sorry. I'll go grab a paper version. What's that?
Tax dollars hard at work.
Technology. You want to sit here so you can base.
I have to, so everything's up. All right. Got a lot of technology. All right. So, so we have 127 parcels here that can be connected to the sewer main lateral. I understand is around, you know, 10 grand or so to get connected from the house. You know, it depend on how far it is, of course, it's going to determine really the, the cost of that, that utility connection. You probably will end up having to cut the road in order to make the connection. Usually the sewer line is in the middle of the drive aisle lane. So there will be a small portion of pavement that would need to be cut. And, and then you would need the 2% slope to the house. So otherwise the home, if it's lower than the road, would most likely need a lift station. So that'll be an additional cost. And I understand that denitrification systems, you, you can get a tank, a 1500 gallon tank from Jensen Precast with a big hole in it that you can put a bio-microbics unit on, which is a product that's been approved by the state in the past. And that unit and the installation, the additional electrical and things, it's about $10,000 on top of the septic system itself. So a septic system, it probably runs around 15 to 20,000 depending on the size. And then in the top of that is another 10,000 for the denitrification addition with those that are approved by the state today. And so anyway, those are pretty rough numbers. And, and so just so you know what the, what we're looking at here. Jackson Valley Road has, or Jackson Valley area, there is some areas, Indian Hills serves all the, all these homes down here. This was one of those areas that we looked at in the last item where the manufactured homes were, and there's an overlay. But, but the sewer is being, or Indian Hills serves water and sewer in these locations. Jackson Valley, as you recall, you come down the hill from the highway. The low point and the drainage kind of goes through this development into the low area of the tribal land where there's logs stacked on it today. And that's kind of how it drains. So this development in order to get sewer on, in, in this area, they would need to, the county would have to maintain and, and install a pump and lift station. So sewer is going to be a little more complicated in this area to get to, but it is available in and around Walmart and Best Buy and Indian Hills has in their service area, this little, these lots here, there's three lots across the street from Target. Target's right here and then Home Depot is in this area here. And then North Valley Treatment Plant, this is all being developed today and the sewer lines are available there. But the SFR1 zoning is actually in Jackson Valley. So there are far findings that we need to make for this, you know, to, for the approval of the zoning text amendment. And staff does not believe all for, all the findings can be made and recommends approval to the county commission or does not recommend approval to the county commission. Staff does recommend that the planning commission provide a recommendation to the B O C C regarding the proposed zoning text amendment. And, and the, the facts that, that basically this, this affects the 208 parcels, I think is what the number was. And I don't think that this zoning text amendment will substantially improve or improve the nitrates that we're having in this, in these, in these areas specifically is what Mr. Ingalls wanted. Wanted this, this code change to do. And we've got just a handful of vacant parcels that this is going to affect and that's not going to clean up our nitrate problem that we have. Getting those, each parcel connected to the sewer system is the, the way we need to go. And it was identified as the way we needed to go in the master plan. So I do have a couple of options, kind of summarizing what we had talked about. The, the, I would like to still have the NAC 444 included in the code. We can evaluate the current nitration, nitrate situation, which we do have a contract with USGS today that we're moving forward on that. Getting that information is, is really pertinent to this, this topic. And I think we need that data. The septic tanking pumping requirements, I know I mentioned that earlier. And Mr. Slade had some questions on that. Why five years? If you look at the EPA guidelines, they, they're saying two to three years is, is on the most repetitive nature, but up to five. And I think if we pick a, pick an amount or pick a number of years that you guys think is reasonable and, and put it in code as being required. I do believe we can work with the pumping contractors. I know Phil Richter had brought this up in one of the meetings I was in with him, that the areas back east where he is from actually relies on the pumping contractors to enforce this. It's, it's money for them to pump those tanks and, and we can have a simple form for them to fill out. So we know that those things are happening on a, on a, on a, on a five year basis. And we can split the county into a number of areas and, and do a rotation schedule on, on how that gets implemented. Tracking and reporting of the tank pumping and well data have, we can have GIS create a, a form, a digital form that those contractors would fill out and, and it would be automatically included in, in Estella. So we could track it that way. And then I think requiring a denitrification septic tanks. I put in on this recommendation, the one and a half, but if you guys want to change that to two, please, by all means, feel free to do that. And the only reason, again, why I chose the one and a half was that seemed to be the, the, the sweet spot on the, that, the, the density for that circular square mile. So I'm available for any questions.
Kirk, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Very informative, Tom. You ran through a lot of things with good data. So I'd like to just go back to a couple of points and get some final clarification. So some of these can be yes or no answers. I think we need to look at the problem from two standpoints. One, the effectiveness of the proposed solution. And secondly, the severity of the problem. So let's, let's start with the effectiveness of the proposed solution. And your numbers were, were pretty good. 6, 6,301 parcels with a total of 6,000. And uh, your numbers were, were pretty good, six, six thousand, three hundred and one parcels, uh, with a total of six thousand, five hundred and fourteen total septic systems. And then when you get down to the parcels that will actually be affected by changing this from a, a one acre to a two acre uh requirement. Uh, you get two hundred and five parcels, so uh, we're talking about three percent of the uh, uh, potential problem is what would be addressed by the, the proposal that's before us. So I think that's pretty, uh, pretty miniscule. Second thing, uh, uh, to, am I correct in all those numbers, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Second thing I'd like to talk about is the uh, uh, severity of the problem, and we included in the background materials, the uh, uh, proposal by Ramon Narango, I believe. Uh, nitrate in groundwater in the Carson Valley, and I'll skip through a lot of the different things. Uh, some of it, I think the, the data was a little confusing on the chart, what is the lot size needed to avoid exceeding the M C L of ten MG over L? Uh, I couldn't even make heads or tails of what frequency means or anything else on that one. Uh, so I think we need a lot better data. The uh, the other important one is what is the lot size needed to avoid exceeding the M C L of ten uh MG over L? And uh, there, I think, if I'm reading this correctly, it, it depends on the recharge. And if the average recharge has been uh four tenths of an inch per year, then the sweet spot is around two point four acres. To be, uh, when we're moving the uh, requirement uh in Douglas County from two acres to one acre and not allowing septics on uh anything larger than uh, uh, anything smaller than that. Uh, we're not, uh, we're not really following through with the data on the severity of the problem. So uh, again, I, I'm not sure if, uh, if uh you have other, other comments on uh, on the material that was presented there. Uh, but that's one thing that just, uh, just puzzled me. And then when I look at further information on the uh, on the uh, the study that was presented, this was studied, uh, presented to the Board of County Commissioners in November of twenty twenty one, so a year ago. Uh, I'm not sure how dated the data is. Uh, we've got some data that seems to be from two thousand and thirteen, and I think you pointed out in your presentation that uh, we need much, much, much better data to deal with the, the problem. So I don't think we're uh, addressing the effectiveness of this, the proposed solution. Uh, and I think we're addressing the severity of the problem in the uh, the ordinance. So I guess, Tom, I just wanted to follow up and make sure I was uh, assessing the information that you prevented, presented, and it was presented at the Board of County Commissioners meeting in twenty twenty one, if I'm correct there.
Yeah, Tom Delair for the record, uh, Mr. Walder, yeah, that, that is correct, you, you've got the data in, in front of you, it is a little pretty complicated uh presentation that they, they did, provided to the board. Um, they don't have any newer data than two thousand and thirteen, that was when the study was done, and the presentation was based on that two thousand and thirteen report. Um, it was starting the conversation about those two items that we talked about, uh, that was approved the, of, in February eighteenth of two thousand and twenty one. And so uh, USGS is going through and updating that data and updating that report. And I think it's important that we get that information and data in order to base, you know, these decisions on uh, with the, with the size of the property. I, I think it's going to be dependent on the severity of the nitrates, which is really specific. And, and so as a, a well, uh, a property owner with a well, uh, is my duty, you know, to make sure that the water I'm drinking is, is, is clear. I don't have a municipality uh in order to, to make sure that that water is clean and is regularly tested and monitored, uh, whereas well water is not. And I, you know, I think it's going to be complicated for, for folks to understand who are coming from, you know, possibly California, let's just say, use that as an example, I'm from California, so there's nothing against them, but um, but I am a transplant as well, and they um get here from maybe in the, in downtown San Jose where they do have sewer and water. And they show up and they have water at their sink, and they have, you know, the toilet flushes and flushes fine. Uh, but they don't understand that they have a septic system that needs maintenance. Uh, it may have been pumped, and they probably knew about it when they bought it, but do they know what it really is? Uh, staff is working on a website, on the webpage, uh, in order to have uh some additional information for those folks, and we are, we are pursuing that still.
Thank you very much. Uh, one question for Sam Taylor then to, when I read the actual red line on the ordinance. Uh, we talk about the parcels created after January thirty first to two thousand and twenty three. So I'm correct that the, uh, as of uh, February first, two thousand and twenty three, if this ordinance were passed, it would kick in. Now that's given people less than three months uh for uh, them to uh, take whatever action they would need. Uh, it seems to me that's a pretty tight timeline. Was there any thought, Sam Taylor, on uh, why this uh, effective date was made so quick?
Um, Sam Taylor, Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Um, in regards to the timing, uh, I'm not sure where that number came from, or the date came from. I, I don't know who created it, was it you or Doug? I, it wasn't me, but it may have been Sam Booth before he left, uh, we've been dealing with this for quite some time, it may have came out, it was some of those in the code were January first, uh, and I know that's way too fast, um, we, I added the three in front of most of those. Uh, in order to make them consistent throughout the whole document. Uh, January thirty first, we do have, after the ordinance, if they do, just go ahead and approve all of this. There is a certain timeframe that the public has for noticing, and we wanted to make sure we covered that, so January thirty first was the date we selected.
Thank you very much. My only comment is, I think that's awful, awful quick for something like this.
Um, just something to point out, um, uh, Mr. Walder, that, you know, if you have a recommendation for a change, that could be one area that you would have a recommendation on.
Bryce, do you have a comment?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Delair, would it be safe to assume that the purpose of engaging USGS in those two contracts is to, one, identify if we have a nitrate problem, two, to determine the severity of that?
Uh, yeah, just from the updated report from two thousand and thirteen, it looked like from that report, we are starting to have an issue. Uh, individual well owners are encouraged to test their water to make sure that it's still drinkable for them. Um, you know, that's how they get, you know, it gets managed. Um, this report would, uh, was supposed, they were supposed to contract with um, with some agencies and collect that data. So that we would have that available for these, you know, next decisions that we need to make as a community.
Thank you. So we just, we don't know, it's been nine years, we, we don't know what the severity of the problem is yet.
Right, I don't, I don't have any records, I couldn't find any online, uh, we found the old report. Uh, when we were dealing with uh, when we were dealing with that subdivision, I think you guys, I can't remember what year that was, probably two thousand and twenty in Jack's Valley. Uh, they actually did, did some water testing, and I think their nitrate level was around six in Jen, in uh, Jack's Valley. And then they brought in a, a professional uh, or an engineer that, that came in and and told everybody that the aquifer was moving towards Clear Creek or, and away from uh their, their public well. Um, and so I think that's probably the most area, the area that we have a most severe issue in. Ruins Straff, I'm sure has a problem, uh, but I, but I don't know the data, and that's what I'm really looking for.
Uh, thank you, and, and to Mr. Walder's point earlier in your presentation, uh, the proposed ordinance today before us wouldn't would have virtually zero impact, minimal impact, I guess to be fair. On the problem that we don't know what it is yet, correct? Just, I mean, just.
Yeah, Tom Delair for the record, that, that is correct. We're assuming that there is a problem, well, I don't know what it is, I haven't seen the data. Uh, of course, additional septic systems, normal septic systems are, are going to be a, a problem. Uh, every one of those areas that you saw, and I, we did that example with my house. So if you look in Ruins Straff, I think we're well over the, the number. Uh, so any parcel that gets divided in there, both those parcels have to be a denitrification, which would actually help the problem, then, you know, or help solve the problem, but getting them off of a septic system altogether is the solution. And we don't have a sewer out there.
Right, and so I, I typically, I mean, most commonly, when we look at any kind of change to an ordinance. We usually know what, we're, we're talking about the change because we usually know what the problem is, and so we've already identified solutions, and therefore we put them into an, and, and change in the ordinance. In this particular case, we don't yet know the problem yet. We're, we're looking to, to move forward with a change in an ordinance to a problem that we haven't quite identified. And, and more importantly, to solutions that we haven't quite identified. So would it be fair to suggest that you need more time after we understand what the problem is and severity of the problem, to then identify solutions that are not only feasible, uh, um, both from a uh an, an ability to solve the problem, but that the county can afford economically, correct?
Yeah, that's, that is correct, we've got, uh, we've got the ability with this report that's coming out in two thousand and twenty four, is when it's contracted through, we'll have the data. Uh, I believe USGS is even going to come up with some recommendations uh on what we need to do to take action. Uh, the action's going to be remove the septic systems, uh, definitely. So uh, we can put this in place today as is, and, and make the, what is it, fourteen lots, or I can't remember the number now. Uh, all those, those parcels that we identified, the less than twenty, right, those parcels, we can make sure that they don't divide their property and, and create, you know, four more parcels, but that's, that, that's not going to fix the problem.
Thank you. So when we know what those options are and those solutions are, then they'll be presented, we'll come back and look at change in the ordinance to feasible solutions to the problem, correct?
Um, I'm sorry, I was distracted there, my bad.
Uh, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm done, I'm, I'm just trying to, to drive home the point here that uh, we, we don't know, we know that there's a problem, we don't know the severity of the problem. But what we do know is that this proposed, proposed ordinance will not solve the problem. That the co, the county's contracted a half a million plus or minus dollars to identify the problem and identify proposed solutions, at which time you and your staff can look at recommendations and changes to the ordinance to then solve those, those particular challenges, correct?
Yeah, no, absolutely, thank you.
Uh, just for a matter of record, if we can hold off on questions for staff. I'd like to open this for a public comment because this is for possible action. Public comment, seeing no one here, I will close public comment and return back to the commission. Does, are there any questions from the commission for Jeremy? Since he's an engineer also, do you have anything you would like to add to Tom's presentation? Since you're here.
Microphone.
So Jeremy Hutchings, Douglas County Engineer for the record, yeah. Tom and I are in agreement in this, I, I don't think this ordinance should, should be approved. Uh, for all the reasons he stated, and I can go into further detail, but I just dragged the meeting on, but I, I agree with Tom's uh position.
Please, Gwyneth, further detail as to why you support Tom's position.
Well, like Mr. Clutz is saying, the severity of the problem's not identified, so we don't have the data. The solution to the problem that we believe we have, especially in some areas, is either already adjusted and state code by requiring denitrification systems to those septic systems in those areas. The real ultimate solution is to put, if you're, if you're serious about improving groundwater. You need to take parcels or homes off individual septics and put them on municipal sewer. And there's a lot of code in place to, that does that, so that's the avenue of the solution you should be taking, not artificially, in my opinion, uh, raising the parcel size. Um, I also see this as taking, I know that's not engineering, it's more in the uh, lawyer's position, but being as my experience is on the private side as well as the public side. Um, and as a property owner, I would say it's a reasonable expectation, you'd be able to use your parcel if you had a larger or a smaller parcel in two acres to build a house. If you're now saying you have to connect a septic or municipal si- system. Um, it might not be financially feasible to do so. Ostensibly, you have now told that person they can't construct a home on that parcel. In my opinion, that's a taking. Um, there are a lot of better solutions to the problem, and I'm trying to think of what else Tom and I talked about that was in the presentation, it's pretty thorough. I think, I think that's generally it. Um, happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, a question for Jeremy.
Yes, Ken.
What is the projected uh, time of this complete system on the sewer laterals and the sewers, sewer mains being installed, is there a projected completion date?
Um, thanks, Mr. Paxton, no, and the, one of the reasons is, as Tom mentioned, Douglas County's um very rural and spread out. There's not one sewer provider for, for our county, Public Works, County Public Works provides si- uh, service to some areas, moving in Gardenville Sanitation District, others, and then there are other private uh, systems as well. Uh, there, there are provided throughout, so there's not one comprehensive look at it, which is also something Tom and I talked about. Is potentially putting together, you know, a group that would look at that and come up with a master plan for every, for all these systems.
Mark.
Obviously, we're running out of time because all the batteries are dying, but Tom, I want to thank you for your very, very detailed report. Um, since we do have M G S D and we have Douglas County uh, and other municipal providers of sewer. Is there anything in code that says if the service provider, let's speak on M G S D since I think they're the biggest, has annexed in additional property, that they have a responsibility to put in the sewer mains to get to that, and then at what point does it become the developer's problem? Meaning when you start splitting it down, at what point do you have to put in the sewer laterals? Or could, could we require the sewer laterals?
Uh, thank you, Mark, um, Tom Delair for the record. I, I think for in, in M G S D's particular case, their, their system, it gets expanded by developers. I don't know that they invest in infrastructure to extend their sewer lines out. Uh, they do have a large service area, and they do serve, and, and that area does include Ruins Straff in that area. Uh, and they are working on a, a big, large grant project where they're going to extend the sewer like, uh, towards, you know, right by Ruins Straff. So the connectivity at that point seems logical at that stage, but I don't think that M G S D has any policies in place uh, or codes that we can reference that they have to extend the sewer out to that area. Um, I think as, as a county, uh, no, with a known nitrate problem in that area for water. Um, we also have a water system that comes down uh into uh Ruins Straff, I did learn this from the G I S mapping. That there is a fire station out in Ruins Straff that has a fire hydrant in front of it. And the, the, the fairgrounds uh water system is actually connected to down into that area at the fire station, that's where it ends. It just is one line comes down for a fire hydrant at the fire station, so uh, there are no services on that, but we could expand, the county could expand uh their uh, water services out there to, as one of the solutions for the water problem uh that the nitrates are creating out there with the wells, but um, but anyway, we um, we do have, I think, some options that, that, um, that that we can pursue in order, uh, you know, to combat this, this problem and not, not just say, we just need two acre parcels everywhere.
Other questions, comments from the commission? Jim?
Microphone gave me one that doesn't work, so. And I hope that, I'm sure they were hoping I wouldn't find one that works, but that's not the way it's going to work. Okay, um. When we somehow go back to the first slide with the ordinance. That oddly enough, the changes were underlined in red, how odd. The commissioners were asked if anyone had, would like to ask a question at that point, and I raised my hand, but uh, I was too late. The staff report is always vitally important.
is always vitally important to planning commissioners and board members in making their decision on whether to support an item or not. Especially important is the required findings. So that the planning commissioners and board members have to the opportunity to evaluate whether it meets the required findings. The staff report is equally important to the public. They are also there to put their questions out and raise questions as to whether it meets the required findings or not. That's why the staff report dated October 26 should have been included the day that the packet went out, not a day later. In addition, not a planning commissioner, who I'm sure all read their agenda items very carefully, but to a member of the public, they would be excused if they thought the ordinance and the agenda packet were on completely separate items. Because the agenda packet. I'm discussing, okay, I'm getting to the issue. The issue is that the agenda packet says that this possible action is to prohibit septic systems, quote, on parcels less than two acres in size. Period. Nowhere in the 14 pages of this agenda packet does it mention that this is after parcels created after January 31, 2023. So that, the fact that that was delivered late, the fact that it's inconsistency inconsistent with the ordinance itself, to me means we should continue it because otherwise it would be an open meeting law violation. But I've discussed this with the deputy DA and he doesn't agree with me. So I will just continue. We know we have a problem. The USGS has told us we have a problem and they've told us it's getting worse and we all know that. But what is the level of the problem? Well, if we look at the map and the supplemental on what is identified as packet page 237, although it's not that page in our supplemental, but that's how it's identified here, the USGS study. If you look carefully, you see that there are there are locations in Kemerling Road and Ruins Stroth where the milligrams per liter of nitrates are in the red, higher than 10, which is the EPA's maximum allowable level. And if you look at all the, there's lots more item locations in yellow in those areas in Johnson Lane as well, where it's five to 10, so on the verge of exceeding the maximum allowable level. So we know that we have a problem. We know that it's getting worse. And we know the ultimate solution because Mr. Delair has provided us with that, although we all knew it anyhow. It's to connect these properties to wastewater mains. The problem, of course, is that we either don't have the political will and or we don't have the money to do that, and there's no indication of when that'll ever be done. So the question becomes, what do we need, what should we do in the meantime? Because we know we have a problem, we know it's pretty serious, and we know it's getting worse. And the question to me is, should we do something to make it incrementally better? Until we get to that point where we can put in that infrastructure? Or should we take action that makes it incrementally worse? By adding even more septic systems? Now, if we look at their diagrams on pages 244 and 243 of the USGS packet in our in our supplemental material, it shows what happens if we continue using septics and don't develop the political will and don't find the money to address this. And those places where it's greater than 10 milligrams per liter aren't just individual localized dots here and there. They are large swaths of red in both Ruins Stroth and Johnson Lane. So that is obviously something that we want to avoid. You know, the conclusion that staff has is, which we know from from what he said earlier, is to connect existing homes with septic systems to a municipal wastewater system and invest in expanding wastewater infrastructure. And that these connections should be mandatory in code. And that is the solution in the long run. We have to find the funding. Perhaps, you know, I think it's worth pursuing the possibility that the infrastructure, the massive infrastructure bill that passed Congress a few months ago, whether we could find some money there that might help help with that, I think that's something worth pursuing. One of the things that struck me in the report is when it says in the Johnson Lane area, there are 127 homes with operating septics that have, well, that's not the way it's, I'm going to read it in English here, with that have municipal wastewater main in the street in front of the home, yet are not connected to the municipal main. Mr. Delair has said that code should be make this mandatory connect to connect. How can we have this problem? Be unwilling to deal with it because of the cost, but not willing to follow the one instruction in there that is simple to do, make them connect to it. We have too many septic systems and the the USGS has made it very clear that it's the concentration of them that causes the problems. I know a little bit about septic. I'm on one myself also, but I live on over five acres. And I did go to school. I went to the to septic school, put on by the Cooperative Extension. And I keep my log of when I did my maintenance, understanding your septic system, et cetera, et cetera. And as I pointed out in my questions to Mr. Delair, when he talks about the possibility, I know this is not his hard suggestion to make a five year requirement for servicing septic systems, but the size of septic systems is based on the number of bedrooms. Yet the use of septics is based on the number of people living there. You know, I have a four bedroom home. Except that it's just my wife and I and a guest bedroom and two offices. And, you know, it also depends on how you use your septic. We don't put chemicals down there. We use one ply toilet paper. We don't have a disposal. All these things make it so that if you use the chart that provided by the Cooperative Extension, I don't need to do it every five years. And it's more like eight or 10. So anyhow, you can't just come up with a number and that complicates things.
Madam Chair, in the essence of time, are we going to get to questions or recommendations with respect to the ordinance?
Jim?
Well, this is, you know, some people got to speak, ask questions before we had public comment, which didn't exist. Then I didn't, I was not one of those. My microphone didn't work. So then there's the opportunity to make comments before the vote, which some people have an opportunity to make a second comment. So I'm including all of mine right now.
Hey, well, the point, Jim, is how one uses their septic system is not as important as formulating recommendations to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will read my brief statement prior to a motion. "One of the most important responsibilities, perhaps the most important responsibility of any government, is to ensure the health and safety of its citizens. In fact, our current master plan on 269 states, quote, 'The health and safety of our residents and visitors to the community remains our highest priority in Douglas County. Douglas County has a serious nitrate problem in several areas and incumbent on the county to set our own standards to protect the health and safety of our residents." Let's be clear about what this ordinance proposes to do. It states that no additional septics may be installed and parcels less than two acres created after January 31, 2023. So this, for instance, would not affect any existing parcels such as one acre parcels in T R E, which seemed to me what Commissioner Chairman Gardner was talking about when he expressed concern about some of his neighbors who lived on one acre parcels and that they would be useless. So I think that needs to be made clear, and it wasn't made clear in the staff packet. Deputy DA Ritchie reminded the board at their September 15, 2022 meeting, page 61 of our packet agenda that, quote, "Regulations, particularly health and safety, environmental regulations change all the time." When asked if that would be a taking, Mr. Ritchie replied, quote, "The short answer is no. There's a rational basis for public health and safety to change something to deal with water." He went on to say, quote, "For public health issues like that, the courts give deference to regulatory bodies." "We know we have a nitrate problem caused mainly by septic systems, and the biggest problems are where the septic systems are densest, Ruins Stroth, Johnson Lane, and the failed Pine View Estates system. We also know that it's getting worse and will continue to do so even if no new septic systems are added. We all believe in property rights, but we also know that they are not absolute, and in this case, they can be trumped by health and safety concerns." The USGS presentation, I already talked about that. While reminding us that nitrate concentrations reduce rapidly when septic tanks are removed, they also stated that if no action is taken to only limit, to not only limit, but also to remove septic systems, that nitrates in many locations, especially in Ruins Stroth and Johnson Lane, will increase over the EPA's maximum allowable level. And Dr. Naranjo of the USGAS stated that nitrates in drinking water most severely affect infants and can cause blue baby syndrome, hypertension, central nervous system defects, diabetes, and cancer. We have to weigh that possibility against, for instance, someone on Johnson Lane who perhaps, perhaps wants to subdivide his two acre lot into two one acre parcels, but who wants to install two septic systems rather than hooking up to the wastewater main that may run by his home? Mr. Delair has told us that the one solution to our nitrate problem is to connect homes with septic systems to a municipal water main and to invest in expanding water infrastructure and to make sewer connections mandatory in code. That is direction we should be taking, not by making it easier to create additional lots smaller than two acres that will utilize septic systems. We should opt for a solution that is incrementally better, not one that is incrementally worse. Hence, I will be voting against this ordinance. To do otherwise, in my opinion, would endanger the health and safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. David.
Yeah, this is Dave Nelson. I have a problem with this ordinance that we're being presented with for a lot of reasons. I happen to be in real estate and I can see a lot of issues that would take days to go into. But just as one example, let's say five years ago, I decided to buy the five acre parcel in an area that's zoned SFR1 with the intent to build five houses down the line, to sell four of them, maybe live in one or whatever. But the intent was to get five houses out of that five acre parcel. Now this law comes in, this ordinance comes in, and I'm now allowed to build two properties because I can't get more than two parcels out of five acres if it's two acres minimum. I think that's a taking. I don't know how our esteemed counselor over here feels about it, but I think that's a taking. And I think it's getting into very, very ominous situations for a lot of people that we should avoid as a county. And as Mr. Slade just stated, the real solution is to get people on sewer systems, waste management systems. And so I would like to see us come up with an idea that would make it as cheap as possible for people that have sewer systems available to be able to hook up to them. One thing we could do is if they're being forced to go onto the system, not charge a connection fee. There's a lot of other things that we can do, and I would like to see if we can come up with a motion that would provide that kind of a solution for our planning department to come up with something along those lines rather than this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'd like to make one short statement. As you've perhaps noticed, I don't say a whole lot as chair, but I feel I need to say something today. Commissioner Angles desires to keep the aquifer clean, and we all would like to see that happen. But too many of the areas of the valley are too dense for this to, this ordinance to have any sizable impact. And as Tom Delair so clearly wrote in his report and said in his presentation, "The only way for Douglas County to preserve water quality is for every parcel on septic to hook up to sewer." Of course, there are exceptions. One 19 acre parcel with a residence and accessory dwelling would not impact groundwater, as will another single family residence along Foothill or East Valley or one of the laterals to 395. Ruins Stroth and Pine View don't have feasible access to sewer line extension and other accommodations will have to be made. The two acre minimum parcel size doesn't make sense in a lot of areas. And whatever code we have should be enforced with regards to denitrification systems. I think it should be enforced, the denitrification all over the county whenever there's a septic system. The only way to clean up the heavily populated areas is to mandate connection and create a funding mechanism to extend sewer lines to improve the treatment plants, and in the meantime, require every existing septic to convert, as I said, to denitrification. Fund a well and septic testing program through user fees to ensure they're being maintained properly. Any program that relies on an honor system is set up for failure. There will be many unhappy people, of course, but I'm certain there are many creative ways to assist in payment through grants, low or no interest loans, et cetera. As has been said, this is a health and safety issue for people living with septic systems and wells in Douglas County. I'd like to split this item into two separate motions. One, approve the motion in front of us to deny the zoning text amendment requested by Commissioner Angles. And second, to make a recommendation to the B O C C to provide staff with direction to come back with a proposal with the recommendations or from the recommendations presented to the planning commission today. Those are the ones that staff recommended with the program to, shoot, I lost them through finding C to work, to come up with a program to isolate the problems and to I lost them completely, old age. But they're all included in our staff report. And then I would like to encourage, my recommendation is to encourage the board strongly for immediate implementation of all the measures listed in the findings that will begin to fix the problem of nitrate concentration in the ground, contamination in the groundwater. And Mark, I believe you have a motion for us.
Yes, so I would like to make a motion. And my motion would be to revise the proposed ordinance to not limit the acreage to two acres and provide direction to staff to prepare some options as discussed in the meeting to include NAC 444 in the code, evaluate the current nitrate situation. The contract is currently underway. Review septic tank pumping requirements. Look into reporting and tracking of tank pumping as well as water data. Require denitrification systems on all parcels of two acres or less. And I would also like to include that we take a look at whatever grant funding might be out there because if we have 127 homes in the Johnson Lane area that are next to laterals, we should figure out how we get those hooked up first.
next to laterals, we should figure out how we get those hooked up first.
Is there a second to that motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Discussion.
Madam Chair, what was the date that this was gonna be retrofit?
January 31st.
And that was for what size acreage?
Two acres or, or less.
Two acres or less. Okay. I don't really agree with the date.
Madam Chair, as a point of clarification, did, Mark, did you incorporate a date into your proposed motion? Right, okay. Thank you.
That date came from Tom.
Yeah, it was proposed in the ordinance itself. It's January 31st, 2023.
Madam Chair, has there been, has there been a second to the motion?
Bryce?
Okay.
I, I think I would agree with the first part of the, the motion to deny the zoning text amendment, but I'm not comfortable making recommendations to the board at this point. I think there's a lot of uncertainty in the data and I would prefer to have a clean motion. I think Commissioner Angles brought this forward as a clean proposition to reduce the acreage from two acres to one acre, and I, I'd prefer to have an up or down vote on the clean motion to deny the zoning text amendment. And then if we wanted to go ahead and consider the recommendations, that's, that could be made in a separate motion, but that would just be my preference at this point.
Jim?
I just have one short comment. You know, I share the concerns that others have expressed to a certain degree of people with two acres, maybe wanting to splitting it into two ones or five and four or five ones. What I would at least like to put on the record, I'm not gonna suggest to Mr. Neddenry that he put this in his motion, but what I would like to put on the record is my biggest concern, and I think it should be the biggest concern of all of us, is a developer comes along and has 100 acres and wants to put in 100 one-acre parcels and put them all on septic. I know commissioners, county commissioners for the last 20 years have been saying we're not gonna approve anything of that size with that many, you know, on septic, but if there's no regulations, that then they're gonna claim it's a taking or it's illegal or whatever, so I would like to see some this only apply to parcels five or 10 acres or less, something along that line. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Bryce?
But as a point of clarification, maybe I misunderstood Mark's recommendation after listening to Mr. Walder, but maybe Mark can clarify. My understanding of the recommendation is that we're going to deny, we're gonna agree with the motion for denial, and that we're gonna direct staff to look into and present a number of different options, but not necessarily that it's our recommendation that the county, that we're not recommending to the county Board of County Commissioners to do all those things, because I, I, I'm with Mr. Walder that I'm not in agreement that we should be directing to the Board of County Commissioners to do all of those things, rather to have staff continue to look into those as viable options. So maybe you could clarify that.
Mark?
So Bryce, I think to make this cleaner, why don't I just withdraw my motion and then we can make a new one? If you'll agree you seconded it.
I would agree.
Mark?
So I'd like to make a new motion. I'd like to recommend to the county commissioners that they deny D P 22-0202, a zoning text amendment, Ordinance 2022-1612, an ordinance to amend Douglas County Code and ord- and ordinance to amend Douglas County Code Chapter 20.100 to prohibit individual sewage disposal systems on and private, I'm sorry, and private onsite sewer treatment facilities on parcels less than two net acres in size, and add a provision for the standards on how septics are to be designed, adding operational duties of individual sewage disposal systems in Chapter 20.650 for clarifying the zoning districts where municipal water and sewer systems are required and other properly related matters.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mark and a second by Bryce. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Jim, do you have findings?
I do. Let me find them. Yes, on on finding A, that is consistent with the policies embedded in the master plan. Policy, master plan policy 1.3 is that it this considered issues of, among other things, environmental impact. I think this compared to approval of Mr. Angles ordinance would have a negative environmental impact. Policy L L 22? L 22, that this enhances each community's desired character. I don't see how adding lots and adding septic systems compared to approving the motion enhances the community's character development. And Chapter 6, Public Safety, "The health and safety of residents remains the highest priority for Douglas County." I do not believe that denying this motion instead of approving it is in the interest of the health and safety of our residents.
Thank you very much. I will now open this for closing public comment. Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Do any commissioners have anything they would like to close the meeting with? Seeing nothing, I would like to thank staff for their excellent reports and for being here. And say goodnight. Thank you, and we will see you next month.